Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our special call meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners tonight. It is six o'clock and time for us to begin this process. As I mentioned, this is a special call meeting tonight for the commissioners to take the next step in the process for allocating the opioid funds that are flowing through our county for opioid intervention programs, whatever. We'll find out more about that tonight. This is a required step in the process and it is a defined process, rules that we have to follow and timelines that we have. And Hal is going to present to the board tonight as to our options, what we're here for tonight before we begin hearing the actual requests. So we thank all of you for attending, being a part of the process. And I know most of you in the room tonight are directly involved with the applications, requests for funding that you have made. And we're glad always to have you to be a part of this process. So Hal, we will turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see the sunlight coming in from one side and all those dark clouds heading off somewhere else and beyond Randolph County. It's, to talk about opioids, it's incredible to think of where we are today and where we came from. And I'm so proud of Randolph County and our departments and our agencies within the county and our Board of County Commissioners. Randolph County was one of the first counties in North Carolina to begin to initiate legal action against the distributors and the manufacturers of opioids. And that process start, it really started about 2016 when our agencies, emergency services and public health and law enforcement and other agencies, social services began to become overwhelmed almost with the issues of drug addiction that was on the rise in Randolph County. And it was beginning to be traced back to opioid addiction. But back in those days, which seems like another world because that was before the pandemic, back in those days, the average citizen did not really understand the impact opioids was having on the drug problem. I recall when the county first initiated and approved the law, to be a partner in the lawsuit, a national lawsuit. In some of the presentations, we would get people who said that we were trying to take away medicine that was given to them by prescription, medicine that was given to them to control pain. They didn't understand the, what all the issues were that involved the addiction problem that we had. I want to say something, I've mentioned this to Chairman Frye. I wish Stan Haywood was here, Commissioner Stan Haywood. He was the first county commissioner years ago, before 2016, to highlight the coming epidemic of opioids, not only in Randolph County but throughout this nation. And he foretold the issues that we were going to be dealing with as a county government and as a community as a result of the addiction that that was going to cause. And I, we remember Stan Haywood today for his role and comments in that process. The, where we are tonight, as you know, the board entered into a national lawsuit. We were among a few counties to start off with, then it became all 100 counties in North Carolina. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners were extremely proactive in the opioid epidemic and working with counties to come up with a memorandum of agreement on what we would do during the legal process if we were to receive any type of settlement from the manufacturers and the distributors of opioids. We had no idea when this process began that it would be to the level that it is now where Randolph County will receive approximately $18 million, giving in different increments over the next 18 years. Now, the opioid settlement is different than any other settlement that I'm aware of. It's, people like to compare that to the tobacco settlement, but it's not the same thing at all. The state and the federal government requires that when that money comes into the local governments, that there be a specific process designed on how that money is going to be spent with certain objectives that the local government, the county governments primarily, want to meet as that money is placed toward opioid, the tragedy of opioids. It's probably the most restricted money that I'm aware of coming into local governments, and that's good because it places accountability, first, on the recipient of the funds, which is the county government. But second, it's designed to help the agencies that will be providing these services to make themselves stronger. And I mentioned the Association of County Commissioners. They worked with all the counties in coming up with a memorandum of agreement, which this board has approved, and all 100 counties in North Carolina have approved, which outlines the programs and the methods that we will use over the next 18 years in trying to combat the opioid pandemic that we're faced with. We have been extremely fortunate in Randolph County in so many ways that with the support of our agencies, our government agencies and our staff, but also the Association of County Commissioners provided some counties in North Carolina with staff support. And that staff support is specially trained personnel, they're called strategic project coordinators, that would work with the counties in areas related to opioid, the memorandum of agreement, to make sure that we're following the proper policies. And we have one of those with us, Leah Gerhart with the Association of County Commissioners working with Randolph County. But in addition to Leah, we were blessed, and I can't think of a better word to say, blessed than Jennifer Layton, who's our Assistant Public Health Director. And the background and the knowledge that she brought to Randolph County through this opioid programs. And these two ladies have helped coordinate the process that Randolph County will follow beginning tonight and throughout the many years to come as we allocate this money. There are a couple of points I wanted to make before I turn this over to Jennifer Layton and Leah Gerhart. Number one is that while the Board of County Commissioners, you can always make decisions in a meeting like tonight, the board is not required to take any action tonight. The board will hear the summaries provided by Jennifer and Leah and then the explanation of how the process was developed. The board can take these recommendations under your consideration tonight, and that you will make and can make a final decision at the May County Commissioners Meeting. You remember I referred to the memorandum of understanding that was developed by the Association of County Commissioners that all 100 counties in North Carolina signed off on. And that memorandum of understanding requires that there be a detailed resolution passed by the Board of County Commissioners that shows the money that's coming in, the agencies that have been recommended to be funded, what that amount is, and equally as important, how those programs, what specific programs are going to be developed. I think the key to that, of all the programs that I've seen over the many years in local government, one of the things that makes this unique is that our staff has built into this process a way to monitor what those agencies are doing and how that money is being utilized. If it's not being utilized effectively, then it can be redirected to other areas as time goes on. Meeting is not, the county gets so much money and we hand that money out to different agencies and wish them well in their activities. We hold those agencies to certain standards once they receive that money and they will be monitored to make sure that the programs that have been recommended are effective. That is the first two items that the board will hear tonight. The third item is there is a second wave of the opioid funding settlement coming to Randolph County. And the Finance Officer, Will Massey, will talk to the board in detail about that. There are certain actions that the board will need to take tonight so that that money can be transferred to the county, I believe by April 18th. So that will be the second issue that the board will hear tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, I will turn the presentation over now to Jennifer Layton and Leah Gerhart.
Thank you so much, County Manager Hal Johnson. Hello, good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak to you today. Again, my name is Leah Gerhart. I'm a strategic project coordinator with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, but as such, I have not worked for a county other than Randolph so far, and y'all have really welcomed me with open arms. What you'll see on the screen are those three primary objectives of this funding package. So not just the use of the MOA and what dictates the use of the MOA, but how Randolph has come together to decide how to use those funds, the process that it has defined, and the structure that is actually going to strengthen organizations that the Commissioners, that y'all choose to fund. The first is to enhance community efforts to develop and/or expand evidence-based programs and resources to address opioid use disorder. Second, to build capacity and infrastructure to measure the impact, again, measuring the impact, the effectiveness of programs and preventing fatal overdoses in Randolph County. And three, to strengthen community partnerships, to improve access to care related to opioid use disorder. So not to, only to enhance their efforts, to build their capacity, but also to enhance their relationships with one another, to fill gaps in that ecosystem of care. How will we accomplish this? How does this funding package accomplish this? Well, existing program support, identifying those agencies, providing these vital services and supporting in this way, giving them or providing them with grant writing skill development, making them sustainable for other funding sources in the future. Grant fund management, so technical assistance regarding how exactly they assign their own grant funds towards certain projects, enhancing their ability to get more funds but also better manage the ones that they're currently receiving. Building their data collection processes, so again, a big part of getting other kinds of grants from SAMSA and other federal agencies is being able to collect the data that they want to see for the outcomes that are defined in those funding packages. So building their ability to collect that data over time, providing technical assistance, which includes drafting a budget that makes sense, you know, looking at what line items truly mean, understanding what personnel costs are for, associating those costs with different grant funding streams, again, grant fund management. And then finally, those last two for strengthening community partnerships. What's very unique about this funding package is it asks all awarded agencies to become a part of the opioid collaborative, which will continue to provide TA, build those data collection processes for not only awarded agencies, but those other agencies in your environment coming together to collaborate. They will also have this technical assistance and become more meaningfully or significantly involved in this work by working together in that process. And finally, they will be required to attend mandatory workshops and training in the areas of, you know, finding ways to enhance their grant skills and connecting them to the association's own technical assistance shop as they build and develop that. I'm not sure how to advance this slide. Oh, I have a clicker man. These are the key accomplishments. We don't want to at all diminish what this process has. So beginning, of course, last year in June and July with your community sessions, after that, the ball really got rolling as far as what the RFP needed to look like. The RFP, the Request for Proposals, that funding package was released on January 6th. Those folks who wanted to be able to be eligible for funds were notified and had to attend a mandatory interested party conference. Many, many questions were collected, gathered at that meeting and answered in that addendum A to the RFP. People signed off and had their questions answered pre-application. We also had the Performance Measures and Grant Writing Workshop available at the Opioid Collaborative Meeting on January 30th, where folks got to really see what's meant by outcomes and measures, what's meant by goals and objectives, and were able to turn that into their application packages. And then on the 10th of February, that addendum B with any remaining questions were answered. The applications were all received on, you know, February 17th. And then, of course, we just recently had our consensus session with the executive committee appointed in order to get some scoring consensus. So we took the aggregates of those scores, came together and understood what we were looking at. You know, we had a wonderful process where we had deep discussion on what their scoring meant. This is the process, though, which y'all received in February at your retreat, but we'll cover this again because today that star is on that 327, one recommendations are here before you today. All applications were due February 17th. All applications were prescreened for eligibility for the review team, for that assessment team. They had to be consistent or compliant with the MOA first. So any proposals that were received by the county were first checked to ensure that the strategies in the proposals or the program specifics were consistent with what the MOA would allow the county to spend their allocated funds on. They were also reviewed for budget to make sure that the items they were requesting were allowable within the frame of the RFP as well as within the frame of the MOA. And they were also screened for their required documents, which included our investigation into their financial health, their financial past, and other documents that would make sure that they were financially solvent or otherwise up to date with Secretary of State and all those other wonderful contract and procurement methods that the county already has in place. After that, we were able to conduct a conflict of interest survey for the assessment team. You have your assessment team, it's comprised of primarily department heads, so we didn't want to introduce bias if they'd ever worked for that department, but we also asked them if they'd ever worked for the agencies that were being reviewed, and we were able to reduce the amount of bias by assigning applications as a result of that survey. They were all assigned to your assessment team, two to three applications per assessor on the 3rd of March, and they had until the 13th to fill out score sheets that were developed and built and based on the sections of your application. On the 13th, all the assessment forms were received, and then we consolidated all those or aggregated their scores to show an average, and we presented that back to the executive committee in order to actually garner a consensus. We talked about what their scores meant, we talked about if there were any areas of concern, and then we took a vote to put forth these eight proposals that will be presented to you as a, as a package, as a block today, in order to make sure that everyone was comfortable with the applications being presented as such, as those eight applications. Bringing us today where that star is, where the recommendations will be provided to you and explained to you by Assistant Public Health Director Jennifer Layton. So thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. We appreciate your time this evening, adding us to your schedule. I know you all are very busy, we very much appreciate it. As Leah pointed out, we did have an executive committee. We did offer some training on the date that she mentioned, in which that training included a review of the RFP components, so they knew what they were reviewing. They also received training on the scoring rubric that we developed in combination with Mr. Massey, and we used that rubric as a fair and, again, minimize bias way to review applications. As a result, those, as Leah mentioned, those reviewers were assigned two to three applications apiece to review. We wanted at least three reviewers to review each application, so we, you know, have a good variety of perspectives, and then also averaged those scores. So if you had one on one extreme and one on the other, you sort of had a balance of the two. So we asked the executive committee to review those applications for strengths and weaknesses in those categories, those sections of the RFP they reviewed. They did only evaluate the narratives. We did not ask them to review the budget. We are, we were leaving that for the finance department to review and make sure that they were in compliance with those rules and regulations. So we asked them to identify strengths and weaknesses. We asked them to identify any critical weaknesses that needed to be addressed prior to program implementation. This could be something to the effect of unclear on criteria on what population you're going to serve, right? We need to note that before we, you know, dive into a project. That's just an example. We also asked them to identify any technical assistance that they felt was needed by that organization, because we are developing a technical assistance plan for the next three years. And of course, some things are going to be front-loaded. We want to do some of these technical assistance opportunities earlier rather than later because we're setting them up for success. So we just wanted to touch on really briefly on accountability measures. We are government and we love accountability and we love to hold everyone to a high, a common set of standards. And so we have pre-contract accountability, which includes, as we mentioned, one-on-one technical assistance for those awarded agencies to ensure successful program implementation, and you will see that in your handout. In addition, we would like to provide some budget technical assistance from our finance department to make sure that the categories that they've assigned in their budget are correct and it's accurately reflecting a support of their proposal. For financial accountability, every organization that receives funds will have monthly expenditure reports for reimbursement that they have to submit. This is a reimbursement-based funding package, not a, you know, money upfront in a check format. We are also holding them to a financial audit by the end of year one by an external party. They are required to submit time sheets and effort certification for their personnel costs, like most organizations would when they're receiving grant funds. For performance accountability, which is most interesting to a lot of folks, we are going to ask them to track the required Department of Justice metrics, just as an FYI, that we have not received those yet. They're still in development with the North Carolina Department of Justice, and as soon as we receive those, that information will be given to those organizations. But in addition to those required metrics, we are going to ask these organizations in their evaluation plan to identify those performance measures they feel demonstrate the impact of their programs in Randolph County.
Jennifer, before you leave this green, and you mentioned the personnel cost, which we would call administrative cost. Is there a limit on that? How much of this money can be used for administration?
That's a good question. I don't know if we set a limit on personnel cost. We did set a limit on indirect cost, and sometimes those words are intercomingled. We did not set a limit on personnel cost. Personnel costs oftentimes are most difficult to fund for organizations, and if we don't have people doing the work, you know, it will limit the capacity of what they can do anyway in the community. So to answer your question, we did not set a limit on personnel cost. In addition to quarterly program reporting, we are also going to conduct, at the end of the first year, a performance review for all awarded agencies. That will include taking a look at those finances. Did they submit their financial reports that they were supposed to every month? Were they adhering to their budget? Were they spending money appropriately? In addition to that, what do their performance measures look like? Are they making the progress they were hoping to make? Do we need to provide more assistance? Are they checking the boxes on their action plan throughout the year? Have they been actively participating in the opioid collaborative, as we are requiring them to do? Are they attending the technical assistance workshops? One-year performance reviews may include site visits, where we get to go out and we get to see what those programs look like in action. Show us what you're doing. We want to take a look and just see how it's going and get a feel for it. In addition to that, as I mentioned, technical assistance workshop participation is going to be a requirement. As Mr. Johnson mentioned, it's going to be so critical to strengthening the ecosystem of our organizations in Randolph County going forward. Okay, and here's what you've all been excited to see for the last, I guess, year of work that we've put in. So here are the organizations that we have reviewed applications from for this funding package. You received a handout as well, which may provide it in a bigger format for you to review. We have six organizations and eight proposals total. So we have represented here the Juvenile Day Reporting Center, we have the Community Hope Alliance, we have the Randolph County Sheriff's Office, we also have Keaton's Place, Chatham Recovery, and our local DSS office. And as you see, we really don't have duplication of services. You may notice that you have, we have one, two strategies where they were duplicate in terms of strategy, but if you look at the populations they're serving, they're not duplicate services. They are targeting different populations in our community and filling very necessary gaps. Each organization that submitted an application for the associated strategy did request the full funding amount for $150,000 for three years. The technical assistance areas that you see noted there are areas of technical assistance that our executive committee identified in their review as being necessary for us to address prior to contract or project implementation in July if they are approved. So what that means is between now and July 1, if you all approve all of these applications, we'll need to work with these organizations to develop really formal action plans with timeframes on all the action steps, an evaluation plan. An evaluation plan is a common grant public health term that we use to say, we want to look at your performance measures, we want to look at your surveys from your clients, also surveys from your community partners. We want to get feedback from those partners. Are you doing what you should be doing to help us support this person collaboratively together? And in addition to that, we also want to help them develop those data collection processes. For a lot of people, data is very intimidating and overwhelming, and we want to help them build those processes for success. And then also, as they are preparing to kick off with their projects or sustained projects, address any concerns around operations and connect to care. It is going to be vital for the population that is served with these funds. If there is an area, a transition between one organization to another for care, if they fall in the gap, there, it's an easy population to lose contact with. And so that contact, that connect to care piece has to be so solid between our organizations, which is another reason why we are recommending all of these applications together, because if we eliminate even one strategy, we weaken the ecosystem. So it's important to identify that all of these strategies play a really significant role in really stemming the tide in Randolph County and addressing the rate of overdose fatalities that we've experienced here in this community. Any questions on this slide or the handout that you were provided?
Jennifer, could you talk just a second? What is evidence-based?
That's a great question. So evidence-based strategies or projects would indicate that the project has been studied, probably more than one study has been presented to demonstrate that it is effective in addressing the issue that has been studied. So in the case of opioid use disorder, all of these strategies are classified as evidence-based strategies because there are bodies of evidence that have been conducted over the last decade that indicate all of these are vital in addressing opioid use disorder.
I have a question about the three-year timeframe, $50,000. Was that, was that just a measure that was set within the parameters? Was that a governmental? Where'd the $150,000 come from?
That's a great question. I love that question. When we were, when we were discussing this approach last summer, I reached out to colleagues across the state and I said, okay, you've got this. And so, that contact, that, that connect-to-care piece has to be so solid between our organizations. It's, which is another reason why we are recommending all of these applications together, because if we eliminate even one strategy, we weaken the ecosystem. So, it's important to identify that all of these strategies play a really significant role in really stemming the tide in Randolph County in addressing the rate of overdose fatalities that we've experienced here in this community. Any questions on this slide or the handout that you were provided?
Jennifer, could you talk just a second? What is evidence-based?
That's a great question. So, evidence-based strategies or projects would indicate that the project has been studied, probably more than one study has been presented to demonstrate that it is effective in addressing the issue that has been studied. So, in the case of opioid use disorder, all of these strategies are classified as evidence-based strategies, because there are bodies of evidence that have been conducted over the last decade that indicate all of these are vital in addressing opioid use disorder.
I have a question about the three-year timeframe, $50,000. Was that, was that just a measure that was set within the parameters? Or is that a governmental? Where'd the $150,000 come from?
That's a great question. I love that question. When we were, when we were discussing this approach last summer, I reached out to colleagues across the state, and I said, "Okay, you've got this massive pot of money. What do you recommend?" And in conversation with other organizations that had also done some funding packages, especially for organizations of different sizes and capacities, they said it's always better to start on the low end, because you're thinking about, this may be the first time they're ever tracking grant ba, sort of grant-based funding, which is, brings its own level of complexity. If they don't have financial policies and processes in place, they're going to have to get those ready to rock and roll before they really can even start submitting those, that documentation. And so, it was very much intended to be a low ceiling, so we have opportunity to get our feet under us and get comfortable with it, not just for the organizations, but ourselves as well, because of course, Will's office has taken on some additional reporting. There's always a, there's always silver, or some strings attached to money, isn't there? So, that was the purpose for that. But also, we don't want folks, we don't want organizations to become reliant to this be their sole funding source. When we do that, we can cripple them, because if they're not preparing themselves for the future, and the money goes away, we spend it and it dries up, and then that program goes away. I always call it, we create a vacuum in the community. And when we create a vacuum, we've created a very dangerous situation for the people that are being served.
Aren't there some other funds specified for naloxone?
There, well, there have been funds in the past. Now, that being said, I know during COVID, a lot of COVID dollars, because they saw the significant sharp increase in overdose fatalities, the state used a lot of COVID dollars to buy a lot of extra naloxone and push it out to the communities. Health departments received some of that. A lot of your harm reduction organizations received some of that, and so did the recovery community organizations, to distribute it as rapidly as possible. That being said, that money's probably, is probably going away as COVID stuff, as COVID initiatives wind down and the public health emergency winds down.
But this is separate from naloxone distributed by EMS, the first responders, Sheriff's Department?
Yes, and currently, I'm not aware of our local emergency management department distributing naloxone. I know that they, I'm aware that Corey Lee trains our local volunteer fire departments, but he has said they don't have the funding budget to provide them any naloxone. And a lot of those volunteer fire departments do not have the funds, and so their next best bet is just to learn mitigation strategies until EMS or a police department can arrive on scene with naloxone.
But, but your request is that we vote for or against, but our, our vote is for these as a block?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Well, we're not voting separately?
No, that was the recommendation, and we do want to, to keep them together, because this, the nice thing about the folks that applied is they're actively involved in the collaborative, and we're trying to create an environment of collaboration, working together, and not as, not an environment of competition. But if we lose even one strategy, we run the risk of, of reducing our, our outcomes in the future.
Wow, so, I mean, is that a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, or is that just period? We're voting on it as a block, period, or what do we have to do?
That's their recommendation to us.
That's, but we could vote on them separately.
Well, you've got posters right here that are listed individually.
Okay, all right, all right.
That's your, that's an honor.
Okay. Yes, sir. This is an early clarification here that's pretty important.
I'd just like to say, it's obvious that they have been carefully vetted, and that the accountability piece is, is in place. And I, I really like that, because I think it, we, we need for these organizations to be successful in this space. We need for them to, with this, with the strategies that they have selected and that they're addressing. And I think it's obvious that this is a good way to build these organizations and to help them become stronger and better at what they do. I like that. I mean, this is not unlike, you know, what we've done in the schools for years, but our nonprofits have not done anything quite like this. And so, I think it, I think it has the potential to make them very strong for the duration.
Thank you.
Are you going to cover these individually, or just, for example, what does Community Hope Allianc, who is their clientele? Who, who do they serve? What, what is their, what is their program? What is the target of their program?
Yes, I can speak to Community Hope Alliance's program. So, Community Hope-
They're on here twice.
Yes, that is correct. So, Community Hope Alliance is the, I think, the only operating harm reduction organization here in Randolph County. And so, their primary target population are people who use drugs, and so, they provide very critical services to, to one, to help educate and train folks on how to identify and reverse an overdose. That's the naloxone distribution request. Naloxone itself is extremely expensive, and they are the largest distributor of naloxone in our community, because they do interface with that population the most. Their other application is the syringe service program, and that's critical. I was looking at some evaluation studies that were done over the weekend as it relates to syringe service programs, and what's interesting about those is it is so affordable to invest in those prevention programs, to save millions of dollars on the back end. So, the syringe service program addresses the issue of people who inject drugs, which introduces a whole host of health consequences that the Health Department often will have to address. And so, we were looking at data for the past couple of years, and for Randolph County, the rates of endocarditis, bacteremia, and sepsis have significantly sharply increased over time, and that's just one example. Endocarditis in and of itself, based on 2016 numbers, it costs around a quarter of a million dollars to treat one person in the hospital. Now, that being said, we've had, we've experienced inflation since then, and so I can only imagine the cost now if they were to evaluate it again. And so, that program itself, when supported to meet the needs in the community, can reduce, one, the burden on the hospital system, and hopefully curtail some of the, the costs that the rest of us incur later on. But also, folks that per, receive services at syringe service programs, the valuation of North Carolina's programs has identified they are five times more likely to enter treatment because they've interfaced with that organization, not one time, but probably dozens or maybe even hundreds of times prior to entering the program. And so, they're really vital to filling that critical gap in our community.
Is there an overall, or an overlying goal here? To me, the naloxone, or that, that helps them get through an overdose? You might give the same person another one next week.
Yes.
So, how do we stop the problem, rather than just making it easier for them to live in their own, what, their own lifestyle?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. It's impossible for anybody to know when a single engagement will be the engagement that turns the tide for an individual. It takes, a lot of times, it takes a lot of interactions with individuals to build trust, mutual trust between the organization providing services and the individual themselves. It also depends on the person in terms of where they are mentally and emotionally, to say, "Yes, I want to commit to some kind of program," whether it's inpatient or outpatient. I don't have a definitive, "This is the time it's going to happen," because it's so variable. The other challenge we often see, as we've conducted our community health assessment, transportation is still a major issue for folks. You know, insurance coverage is still a major issue for folks. So, the fact that if I don't have a transportation to get to care, or I don't have insurance, and I got to pay out of pocket for all these visits to the, to the doctor's office, whether it's primary care or mental, mental health services, it may not be feasible for me, even if I really, really want to. And so, these organizations, as we're working to build our ecosystem, the recovery ecosystem here in Randolph County, are working to build what I call it the network, the web, of support, and each will play a vital role in supporting that person's journey to recovery.
But now, we're going to have Medicaid expansion. So, is that going to pay for some of their treatments?
It's supposed to, and that's really-
That's just going to sustain their lifestyle?
Well, it's supposed, it should open the door for them to be able to access services they may not have had access to before. And so, I believe, my understanding is Medicaid expansion services will also cover cost of mental health services and substance use treatment as well, which is really exciting for people that, that need that support.
I would remind this board and, and everyone else, under new ethics rules, any, any Commissioner that sits on one of these boards cannot vote.
Okay.
So, I, I make that clear. I know some of us do. I, I, I don't, I think Hope was on Lydia's place, but I don't think she's-
No, I'm not, I'm not on, I'm not on.
But that, that's, they're not requesting any money, any. I know Maxton and Commissioner Kidd are on juvenile crime and Keaton's Place.
What about DSS?
DSS. Maxton's also on DSS. Hope's on Health Department, I don't know.
Yes, I'm on the Health Department.
If that's an issue, but, so, that, that will change the way we vote, our voting process.
Yes, sir.
I had a, like, well, this is kind of rolling back a little bit, but I, I hate to interrupt in the middle of you. Like, I can let you finish your presentation and then kind of come back to questions.
I'm, I'm at the very end. Yes.
On the financial piece, the, so that you had mentioned, and make sure I got this right, so, all of these organizations, which, I mean, so, we can go back to that page if you want to, that'd be good. We can go back to that page where you were.
Am I not, is it not, not yet, financial, this piece? I apologize.
I'm going to, but just, for example, I mean, obviously, DSS, Sheriff's Office, and JDRC wouldn't probably, this wouldn't apply to them, but I know, and I know this is different dollars and it came through a different way, but like, typically, when we give anybody money, we require an audit. Yep, so, but there's not an upfront audit before we're distributing any funds? It's after a year?
Yes, in consultation with Mr. Massey, we built the caveat that, for, especially for these nonprofits who've never had an audit done before, to submit a letter from their board explaining why they weren't able to, to secure an audit. For some of them, they have not identified a local CPA that can offer that service, and right now's tax season, so it's really hard to get answers to questions. But also, cost has been a factor for some, for some organizations, but they are required by the end of that first year to have that audit done. That's also good preparation if they were to apply for a large pot of money. For example, if somebody were to, I think, Leah, correct me if I'm wrong, if they were to pursue funds over like $500,000, federal dollars, that's going to require a whole nother level of audit. So, the nice thing is, is it, an audit at this level is not terribly complex. I used to serve on United Way Board, and their audits were awful, because they had pots of money coming in and out constantly, and so it was complicated.
So, the, the audit piece, is that mandated with all the regulations, or this is a decision we made about the audit, or, okay, all right?
That's a policy we, that we've established, correct, Mr. Massey?
Yeah, we're following state law up to a point, you know, and we identified if any of these organizations have federal or state funds, and, and this kicks them into a separate level, we tried to identify that as well, too. But, you know, these funds start July 1st, so the '23, '24 fiscal year, and so they would have to have an audit of the '23, '24 fiscal year.
So, they fail to have an audit or an acceptable audit at that point, is that a callback to your program stopped, and you only got the first 50, and you might not get the other 100?
It could be.
As well as all the performance requirements.
Yeah, measures as well, yeah.
In order to get to second year, they have to have an audit on the first year.
Yes, sir, and it's a requirement.
Well, I'll just go ahead and say, I mean, I think it's just a little, as much of a stickler as we usually are, which I respect that, Mr. Massey, about writing a check to any organization in the county with any dollars that come through Randolph County. I think it's odd.
All of these will be on a reimbursement basis, so we will see the performance and-
We never write a check to any organization that we don't have an audit from, even though we're giving them $10,000. Because we've gone through that at budget time every year. There's always a couple of organizations like, "Man, this audit's killing us. It costs us $5,000 or $6,000. We're only getting 10. We're spending half of it on audit." I just think it's weird that we would commit to this.
Commissioner Kidd, I, I think the difference is, there's a, we have accountability with this program, and those other programs, there is no accountability.
Don't say there's no accountability.
Well, I mean, I, I mean-
To the other programs.
Essentially, you know, we give them, you know, say, $10,000.
And we hope they take care of it?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's no procedure, no assessments, no, you know-
Did they do, were they good stewards of their money?
That's the best thing in the world, but I'm saying, you know, that, I think that might be one of the differences.
Okay.
If there is some accountability and continual-
You know, there may be an organization on here that, you know, we don't know anything about them, or how they got started, or what they're doing, or how they, how much money they take in. It's just kind of odd that we would write them a check, as much of a stickler as we are, if, I don't know, they just popped up and, like, "Okay, well, I hope you make it. Here's $50,000," or whatever. But that's, this is my opinion.
I understand your concern, yeah.
Just, just the financial piece, sorry.
I, I thank you for your question.
What, you talked about the rubric that you used.
Yes, sir.
What, what, and I'm not a professional in that type of stuff, but what, what measures were these organizations scored upon?
So, we used the-
Don't have to get it to tell, but just kind of-
Yeah, so, we used the same rubric, Mr. Massey, I think you used in another funding package as well. We duplicated what was done before. We wanted to build on some structure that was already utilized. And all we asked, we did some training on sort of what we wanted our executive committee to look for in each section, and they were asked to score each section, poor, good, or poor, average, good, or excellent. And they just wanted, we wanted them to explain, you know, why they scored them that way, and so, and that, that's how we generated the scores. So, it was really, again, designed to minimize bias in the process.
So, wasn't anything like a technical review or anything like that from a provision of services or anything like that?
No, because some of these, some of these projects are brand new. They're just starting, and some have been around for a couple of years, and so, we'll learn a lot along the way. Those quarterly performance measures, we will be asking questions like, you know, what challenges are you having? What additional support do you need? For Commissioner Kidd, we could also include, have you had any success in getting your audit completed yet? Do you need some support there? We can add that in there if that will make you all feel more comfortable. Happy to do that.
How many applications did you receive?
We received 13, and only five were not, were not fully compliant with the MOA, and so those were the only five we removed.
Okay.
From review.
Okay, so, basically, if, if they qualified, then they went through the scoring process? Or was that kicked out during the scoring process?
No, we removed them before the scoring process. We didn't want to spend our time scoring it if we knew it wasn't going to be compliant with the MOA, and that was the gift of Ms. Gerhart here, really knowing the MOA really well.
Does, the Chatham Recovery?
Yes.
Is that facility in Randolph?
Yes, sir. They opened in June of 2021. They are the only, as far as I know, the only behavioral health provider in our community that can provide all three M O U D prescriptions, so that includes methadone, buprenorphine, and naltrexone. They can do all three of those at their office. I, I'm not sure if anyone else provides methadone as a treatment option. They, they are the 12th site in North Carolina to open, and they have, that organization as a whole has received a lot of grant funding in other counties to support programs that have been there, and they are also a licensed facility with North Carolina. So, they adhere to very strict regulations.
So, what kind of evidence are you looking for?
I'm not looking for any evidence. The, the, the services they provide are evidence-based addiction treatment approved by SAMSA.
Is it quantified? Is it?
Oh, yes, yes. They're able to measure. They have fantastic measures, because they do have to submit regular reports to the state, to Sand Hill Center, which is our local LME, MCO, but they also are required to have, I think, audits annually from SAMSA, because they are an opioid treatment program, which is very highly regulated.
And I, I think- Mr. Chairman, are we going to do like, like a brief, kind of highlighted, at least, overview of each of these, or how you want to just, just kind of?
Whatever you want to do. That's why they're here.
Okay, I mean, can you give us a nutshell on all of them? You know, like, quickly what their program is, what they're trying to do, how they're trying to achieve it, you know? Can you just dive into?
I can, I could try to, from my memory. I'll do my best, because I, I know sort of the-
Of course, I mean, we have all the detail here, but-
Yes, and you all receive the narratives, and sometimes, sometimes narratives don't always address all your questions. So, for JDRC, they will support their current programming that addresses early intervention for youth. So, under the MOA, what early intervention means is, youth under the age of 18 have been identified to potentially have a substance use disorder, specifically opioid use disorder, and they need to be, receive services. Because JDRC does provide those services, they're able to utilize these funds to support those programs. I, I recall some of the curriculums they will use not only support the youth, but the families as well. So, they're really strengthening that, that connection between the families and the youth to increase their success. For Community Hope Alliance, naloxone distribution, as I mentioned, they're the largest distributor of naloxone in our community, and I like to point out, we discussed at our opioid collaborative meeting a week ago, and Hope was there, we looked at the success that Randolph County has had with community overdose reversals, and that is attributed to the organizations in our community that have distributed naloxone. Had we not had it there, our fatality- Uh, I recall some of the curriculums they will use not only support the youth, but the families as well, so they're really strengthening that, that connection between the families and the youth, uh, to increase their success. For Community Hope Alliance, naloxone distribution, as I mentioned, they're the largest distributor of naloxone in our community, and I like to point out, we discussed at our opioid collaborative meeting a week ago, um, on Hope was there, we looked at the success that Randolph County has had with community, um, overdose reversals, and that is attributed to the organizations in our community that have distributed naloxone. Had we not had it there, our fatality rate would be much higher. So, what they actually do is they provide naloxone to people engaged in their program, their syringe service program, but they have expanded naloxone distribution to include folks that are not necessarily injecting drugs, but using drugs in other manners, because we have seen, uh, a significant rise in the, in the nation for overdose fatalities due to an adulterated drug supply with stimulants, so they've expanded the population they provide naloxone to. Randolph County Sheriff's Office, um, I believe you all heard about that in March, do you need?
Let's stop on that one. So, the one, what we talked about in March with that, is this going to pay for that program, or is this supplemental to what we approved?
Supplemental, yes, it's not a hundred percent coverage, yes, sir, that's a good question. And so, you all heard about that program, do you have anything additional on that one?
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's supplemental, so it's not offsetting anything, but, I guess, the same kind of question, that JDRC and some degree maybe DSS, but we funded that program, so does this mean that we will, we'll continue to fund at the same level, and then this is over on top of that, or? I'm getting a little confused on, or, on how the coordination, especially with the county department.
Yeah.
How that's going to impact on what we fund for the ongoing.
Yes. And that, that may evolve over time. We started, like we said before, we started with that low ceiling, so we all get comfortable with it and see how it goes.
I'm all for saving the county money, don't get me wrong, but, you know, how's that going to work, I'm sorry.
That may evolve over time, and, and we, as we move through the process over the next few years, we may say, okay, we're looking at, um, if we're not getting a lot of engagement for services, do we need to throw more money into it, or do we need to invest in another strategy? Um, or are they overwhelmed, and they are ex, uh, ex, exceeding their capacity, and they're going to need to pull in additional staff to serve all the people they're serving? It may be legitimate to say we need to raise our ceiling. Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, so do I, I don't need to cover anything with the, the detention center MAP program, correct, because you all heard that in March? Okay, uh, Community Hope Alliance is the syringe service program, as I mentioned, uh, those programs, uh, can be expensive to operate because of the cost of supplies over time, but it's very cost-saving overall in terms of reducing the spread of hepatitis, HIV, again, the development of endocarditis and sepsis, um, we reduce, uh, the, the traffic through the hospital systems that way, and increase connections to care for services. Randolph County Sheriff's Office, uh, has opted to provide naloxone to individuals, uh, upon release, and I want to say, this is so critical, because immediately upon release, an individual has a massive increase, I would give you a number, but I'm sure I would not be correct. It is a significant increase that they will die as a result of an overdose when they leave the sheriff's, the sheriff's office care, because if they have been in the detention center, and they have not been using drugs during that timeframe, they're extremely sensitive to whatever they use out in the community, and so we know that's a really high risk, and so the sheriff's office was very cognizant of that, and wanted to provide that life-saving resource when they leave, leave their care, which was really a good idea. It's also a very, uh, strong evidence-based strategy. Keaton's Place provides recovery support services, so you all know that Keaton's Place does an excellent job of connecting individuals to care, inpatient, outpatient, transporting them to the services they need. They're also looking to expand their work to include additional staffing, so they can do some recovery services, some recovery programming. We had actually talked about some opportunities to measure the development of recovery capital in people that participate in their programs, which I'm looking forward to seeing the measures with that, because that's one of those performance measures, like, that's the proof in the pudding, right? It's working. They are developing their skills to be successful in recovery. And I may not have covered that as well, because recovery support services is a lot of things, right? It's, it's developing, uh, a support system, um, with other folks in recovery in your community, it's developing, um, helping strengthen the relationships between the individual and their families, it's helping them develop, again, months and ti, a, a good solid long timeframe of being in recovery, which the, the closer they get to a year, their success increases. Chatham Recovery, we mentioned they're an opioid treatment program in the community, they are the only one providing, uh, methadone in addition to buprenorphine and naltrexone. Um, in addition to that, they also provide access to a psychiatrist, um, and so that's really important as well. Um, and DSS, Recovery Support Services, DSS, um, as you all have probably heard, and Chairman Frye, it's been very dear to your heart, you've mentioned it multiple times in some presentations, that they have seen a significant increase in demand for foster care homes and child abuse neglect cases as it relates to substance use, and so they're looking to embed a licensed clinical social worker to provide intensive support to families that are impacted by opioid use disorder. If they can really provide that direct, solid support over a period of time, as opposed to doing a touch point, doing an assessment, and then, and then letting them go, um, they're hoping to have better success at, again, keeping families intact, but also to strengthen that, the family's support in working their way, making that journey to long-term recovery.
So, the, the DSS would be for a position, a specific position, a person?
That was indicated in their application.
That wouldn't, fifty thousand dollars is not going to be enough to.
No.
No, and Val, Val, the assistant director, mentioned that as well, wouldn't cover it a hundred percent, mm-hmm.
And that person would have to come, be a county employee.
But, as we mentioned, um, when Mr. Commissioner Allen asked this question, it may be we evaluate, you know, over the next few years, and we're like, this is amazing, it is really making a huge difference, and so we're going to bump that ceiling up to continue to support those programs, uh, more fully, and continue to build on the success that we've developed here at the beginning.
I guess to piggyback on that question, so, I mean, was there a, I guess there's may, one, two, maybe three of, of the programs we talked about here, including the DSS one, that was a hiring of a position?
Yes, and there, there are several that we're going to hire either part-time or full-time positions.
So, I mean, the, just, so is this a hundred and fifty, fifty over three years? At the end of three years, I guess that same organization could come back and continue to apply for eighteen years?
Yes, they could, mm-hmm.
So, it's possible they could sustain that position either on their own or with future funding from these funds?
Yeah, I, that's sort of, I can remember.
Just the sustainability of a person, you know, because the, you know, the recurring expenses is one times.
We used to get Alan McNeil, when he was, uh, the financial guy with the Sheriff's Department, I think about three times, there were federal grants for hiring officers, uh, anywhere from three to five, and the funding was for three years, and it, and we never got rid of one of them at the end of the three or five years.
Yeah, that's my concern, is, you know, how's that, you know?
And that's a great question. Part of that technical assistance over the next few years is helping with strategic planning and sustainability planning. Um, some of these organizations are fairly young and may never have had the opportunity to do that, they may never have had, uh, the capacity to bring in maybe a consultant or somebody who's an expert to come help them develop a strategic plan that incorporates sustainability planning, and the nice thing about having Leah and the Association of County Commissioners, they've got people on their staff that can help us provide that technical assistance. Um, we are really building this as the initial building block, the foundation to all of our work for the next eighteen years, and recognizing that there'll be a lot of grace in the next three years for us, as well as our partners out in the community, um, because there'll be a lot of learning and preparing, you know, building our strength, building those wings, so we can fly independently when the eighteen years ends.
Chair, Chair, for there, uh, you know, I know the, uh, I understand what you meant, there's eight programs that have been submitted, and there's a synergy, or, for lack of a better word, between each of those programs to help attain a certain goal. But, if the county commissioners make a final decision in, in May, when they'll, they'll have resolutions, uh, dealing with these issues, there's a, you said they would have to vote either all or nothing?
That was, that was our recommendation, um, certainly it's up to the board, but that's the recommendation we made.
That's the point I wondered about. That, that's a recommendation of a professional team, but the bottom line is that the final decision rests with the board commission.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there, there might be another, well, there is, obviously, there is a, certainly with the DSS position, there's another way for the county to deal with that. Eas, easily. Now, you know, fifty thousand a year is that, um, that's not going to offset all the costs for that position, probably not, would, would benefit, it's probably not half of it, so.
And digging through it, that's whoever started it, that's the big concern, is this is some kind of slippery slope, we're winding up creating all these permanent positions that may be unfunded in the future, and even on the nonprofit side, there's at least one or two of them who said in their application, they expect future co, funding from county commissioners to sustain their program, which is a little unsettling for me, because I don't want to create some recurring expense that, because of this free fifty thousand dollars, yeah, I mean, it's in here, right here, future commissioner support.
Well, I was going to say, what decision to this board only lasts until the next board's seated, and so.
This is true, that's a very wise, uh, wise, uh, comment, yes, sir.
So, remind me again how much the, uh, total amount of funds?
Yes, the, I believe the handout that we've provided, the total funding package of all of these proposals will total one point two million dollars over the.
Not these.
Oh, apologize.
The total amount of opioid settlement funds we're getting.
Oh, I apologize. The first wave is a little over nine million dollars, and then this second wave that you all will be discussing will bring in another seven point eight million dollars.
Okay, and so, these would, if approved, these would use one point two million dollars at the end of three years?
Yes.
The exact number is seventeen million, six hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and eight cents.
Over eighteen years.
Over eighteen years.
Yeah.
So, that's about a million dollars a year.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And our first year was weighted a little heavier, uh, for, it came in two batches, I don't, I'm not, that's Will's issue, but, um, it, it was a little, it was a little more than what the preceding annual appropriations would be.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for going through all the nutshell of the.
You're welcome, and I probably did not do them justice, so if they're present, I'm very sorry, I could not give you a program really detailed review, but they've, um, I was really excited to see the blend of, of proposals that we received, it was, and it was interesting, at the interested party conference, the partners wanted to talk about, well, what are you going to apply for, so I don't necessarily duplicate what you're doing, so they're already looking for opportunities to co, collaborate and complement one another, so that they're not duplicating services in the community.
Was there any, any one specific issue in the five that you didn't include, that, if they made some changes, they could come back later and, and qualify, or you would recommend funding for them?
It, they just, they just, the way they were presented, it just would not align with the requirements of the MOA, with the strategies they identified. Um, we could not be confident that we would not violate the MOA, and so to protect the, the county, we said, you know, we'll just set those aside for now, yeah.
So, did some just say, give us the money, and we'll do something with it?
I don't think that was the intent, I just think that some of the strategies are very complicated, and so if you're just starting out and just going in these programs for the first time, you're not really sure what the process is going to look like, and you haven't learned those workflows yet, and that's the beauty of the first three years, is giving people the opportunity to learn.
Yeah, there's a couple of strategies that, you know, which, I mean, this is not my space, I'm way out of my lane, but it just, I don't see how, it, it's really complicated to implement something to, it's just a couple of pieces to it, that I don't know how that would, what that even look like, so, but.
Yeah.
And I, I want to say, I, as the chairman of this board, I was not aware that we were being asked to fund these in a block till probably two or three o'clock this afternoon. Um, I, I would like to have had a little more awareness of that, uh, uh, but I, I did not understand that that would be the, the, the process, so, um, we'll just, I, I, I think that could, could become an issue, we'll just see how, how it plays out.
Okay, yes, sir.
And like I said, uh, especially with social services, we might, we never want to use somebody else's money, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand, but, um, there's another way to work that out, but.
I don't mind using somebody else's money.
I do not mind using a drug dealer's money.
But, uh.
Because that's what they were doing, the drug manufacturers and distributors.
Oh, I understand, this, this is.
I understand.
I'm not, it's not, tax, this is coming from the people that handed out the drugs, I know it.
That's right.
Made it, I know it is, I know it is, and I'm, I'm glad to use it, I just want to make sure we use it in the best way, and I, and, you know, it, it hadn't been said here tonight, but homelessness is, is a growing, growing issue in the county, and.
Especially in downtown Ashboro.
I've been here in recent days and weeks, so I'm think, what we're doing is just making them feel more comfortable in their environment, and they're coming here to, to get these things, and, um, I watched some of it Saturday morning, standing right out that door, when we were waiting on a group of students from NC State, I, I saw them come out from the garage over here underneath the old bank building, saw them come out from behind the drive-through back here, and sitting on in our benches and dancing in the middle of the street, um, so, you know, we, I hope they get recovered, I hope they recover, I hope they have a better life. But, that would be a focus to make sure that we don't just create more of them coming, but how, if we can deal with that issue with this money that we're getting.
Yes, and you bring out, you bring about a good point, I, you know, our opioid collaborative has three work groups, and they've been working through their action planning process, and we just finished that up in February, and housing was a big discussion point for one of those work groups, you know, it's really, it's really difficult for an individual who is seeking to sustain recovery over time, to do so when they don't have a place to live, you know, what's the motivation if I, if I, if I don't have a safe place to stay, and so that was a, a very hot-button issue in one of our work groups, so we understand where you're coming from, sir.
Well, since you cracked the egg on that, the, Mr. Chairman, I, I kind of, you know, this is all, I mean, we were kind of waiting to see what your recommendations were, I didn't dive into this, or start messing with it too much, or I just kind of left it up to y'all, because this is your lane, and I appreciate that. Um, but I guess, and I didn't, when we went, started with the, the memorandum, I guess, agreement from the, the strategies here, where it talks about that, that we.
Yes.
We've entered into this, with, we have receiving these funds, um, and so I've just dove into this a lot more since we got our packet and started looking at all these programs, and, and I've tried to do a little bit of homework. One thing that I guess is, kind of, Daryl touched on it, and just using terms in this lane, if you will, harm reduction, and that debate on how, you know, treatment is handed out, and, you know, recovery is looked at and everything, is a big hot-button issue, and I noticed, unfortunately, because, I mean, this is for, this is my opinion, you know, even in this document right here, harm reduction is mentioned like six or seven times specifically.
Yes.
And just, you know, doing some research on doing that is exactly what Chairman Frye was talking about, is, you know, if you look at the extreme limit of, you know, harm reduction policies in cities like San Francisco and Asheville, that's why they look like they look, is there's all this, you know, overflowing of services and everything that are just sustaining a problem that never goes away, and you're just enabling these people to be able to stay here and stay in this cycle, and they never break it or get out of it, it's just, you know, why would I leave if everything's here that I need? I can get all the needles I need, I can, you know, bring my buddy back seven or eight times when he overdoses, I can get all the other, you know, food and services and everything else I need, why would I leave? I don't need to recover, I'm doing fine. That's what I would think, and I think, you know, extreme, but I mean, I guess that's kind of my concern overall is, this is just an open, but, well, but we're already here, so it's spelled out in this, so I should have caught it a year ago, but, and then based on what we've recommended, this just seems like we're opening the door to a wide-open harm reduction program that's going to get worse and worse, and like, the tip of the iceberg that he mentioned, you know, my office is in downtown Ashboro here, right, it's a block away from, less than a block away from this building, you know, and I walk over needles coming to my meetings. My daughter works across the street, she walks over needles in the parking lot and go into her car, you know, and everything that's going on downtown with the services that we already have, I would agree with the chairman, is, I've never seen the problem that I've seen in the past two years downtown. I've been here for years in the same building, never had a problem. I had to call PD seven times last year, because some stoner is in my yard goofing off. I've never had that problem before, I never picked up needles five years ago, so this, you know, harm reduction debate is just a big concern of mine, is this just a big slippery slope here, we're opening up the door to all kinds of, you know, well, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to lie, I mean, the, the needle exchange program, and even looking at their own data in their report to us, the big concern that I hear from taxpayers and citizens, especially in the city of Ashboro more than anywhere else, is, okay, is, you know, I look at those numbers they had of all the needles they distributed, it was like a hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Yes.
Seventy-one of them were returned, so I'm using round numbers, a hundred and twenty thousand needles are still on my sidewalk between here and my office. That bothers me and every citizen in the city. That bothers me and every citizen in the city of Ashboro, and every kid in every park. I can't stomach that, and I feel like that is just enabling somebody. Why would anybody in little old Randolph County with Randolph County values think that it's a good idea to tell a drug user, a drug abuser, that we're okay with you participating in illegal activities, and here's some government help to do it? I can't think of any other crime that we look at that way.
Yeah, I understand, I understand those concerns, and those have been echoed in the last 10 years as we have seen harm reduction programs spread throughout the United States. Those were programs that have been implemented in other countries with a lot of success. I will say, in communities in the southeast that have eliminated their harm reduction programs, we saw an explosion of HIV and hepatitis to the point that the government had to deploy emergency response. It was established as an emergency situation. If we eliminate those programs, that's the risk we run. It gets worse in the fact that we have, we see communicable disease spread really rapidly. That being said, when we look at the data provided by the current program, they typically have a return rate of about 25 to 33%, which is considered a really good return rate. That being said, those that are returned are the ones they count. They cannot count all the ones that are properly disposed of because they may never see those folks more than one or two times. It depends on how often they engage with those folks. They are provided Sharps containers and educations on how to properly store those. There's no way to track everyone, every supply item that goes out. The same can be said for other programs that are supportive in nature. We have no idea how folks use the tools and resources we provide, then when they leave our care, we can only provide them education. But at any rate, those programs bring a lot of value in the fact they reduce the spread of communicable disease, reduce the burden to the hospital system in terms of those really complex health issues that oftentimes those bills never get paid because they're so exorbitantly expensive. In addition to that, as I mentioned before, evaluation, independent evaluation of North Carolina syringe service programs has indicated that those folks are five times more likely to enter into programs to receive services because they do have a longstanding trusting relationship. And so we have to look at that as a win, or moving them in that direction.
And I think, I, I just, I can't see how that kind of average is a win. I mean, Major League Baseball, you know, if you bat 300, you're in the Hall of Fame, which is a terrible average for anything. If I was that successful in my business, I'd be out of business. And this is lower than that, and we're considering it as success. I mean, and I know this organization has been participating in this program through other funds, I don't know what funds, for a long time. Almost every neighbor they've ever had has begged the city of Ashboro to get them to move because their neighboring business was littered with needles and paraphernalia and drug problems for, what, for years, five or six years or longer. And so it seems like it's a community problem as well. And if I can pick on the chairman, I mean, the reason the chairman doesn't have a communicable disease or a sexually transmitted disease is because he makes good choices.
Yes, I'm not going to debate that. Yes, sir.
So-
I do think-
Continually makes good choices.
That, this, this homeless, and I, and I'll tell you, I went, we had a big dinner right here in Ashboro last Friday night, and I had a fellow to come up, take his cell phone, and show me a picture that was made right across the street from his courthouse, and there must have been 500 needles in the shrubs around the back of that building over there. And that's putting more of a focus on what we're doing here because that's what is perceived as the problem. And they're watching what, what we do, how are we going to use the money, how are we going to make those things go away? And here we are as a county, you're not going to go over to the city of Ashboro and make a presentation. It all falls on us. And not just this, there's any number of things that fall on the county to fix, and we don't have all the work with all to fix some of them because others are involved and have responsibilities likewise.
In the Community Hope Alliance application, or whatever, application's plural, whatever, I can't remember which one, it may have been redundant, both of them, they talked about a facility, a permanent place, physical location, because I know the address that they used on their application is somebody's house on Zoo Parkway, anyway.
Yes, they have not had a fixed location, I think for a number of years with my understanding. They currently operate on the most efficient model that you can operate with a syringe service program, and that's a mobile program where they're able to meet people in the areas they're comfortable. Since Randolph County does not have a consistent public transportation, and we do have folks that have difficulty getting to and from places to receive services, they travel out to areas where folks are residing and provide services, education, naloxone, as well as harm reduction supplies. And so they don't have a fixed site. They're looking for a site for staffing and to temporarily store their, their supplies.
Have they narrowed that down, or we know where that is, or we don't know? They kind of alluded to it, but I couldn't get a geographic location from their-
They're having, like most people, they're having a hard time finding a space that's an affordable rent space, but they're really just looking for office space. So they have a place to store all their documents, their supplies, because of course, over time, the supplies, you start, or if you work in a medical facility, order a lot of supplies, it takes up a lot of space, and so they've had that same challenge.
Well, I had another kind of distinction that I made, kind of reviewing this and looking at this and considering all these proposals. One of them, I want to go back to that harm reduction, you know, philosophy.
Yes.
You know, the extreme to that is, since we've talked about the needles and all this stuff so much, if you look in some of these larger cities like San Francisco, for example, you know, they've taken harm reduction so far that they have a government-provided place to go hang out and do drugs with everybody safely. That seems crazy to me using my Randolph County values template. I can't imagine that we would get to the point in eight years that we would layer onto these programs and do something like that. But that's where harm reduction goes, so this is just information for the public. The other one was on the medical side of it, on the treatment side, I guess there's a decision, at least for me to make, of, so can you explain, so the drugs that the different programs offer versus, I know the detention center will be issuing what drug?
Buprenorphine, and they'll also be using, oh my gosh, Vivitrol. There you go.
Can you explain those drugs to me?
Oh, gosh.
Are they synthetic opioids, or?
She's, she's a, she's a medical person, so I prefer her explain.
So is, is naloxone, or can the only drug covered by these funds?
Would you like to explain that?
Oh, oh.
I was on the, the medical use during treatment, not the-
Okay, alright.
So there's, buprenorphine is, I believe it's an opioid agonist, so it, what it does is it blocks that portion of their brain that gets them high, and then also fulfills that need of them wanting to get high. So they don't overdose on buprenorphine. It also contains naloxone on it, which prevents them from using other drugs. And if they do relapse, because relapse is a part of recovery, they're less likely to overdose from it. Opposed to like methadone, which we don't use, we have to continue it because it's the law, but we will not be providing methadone because it does stimulate that part of the brain that makes them high, and they can overdose from methadone. Vivitrol-
Thank you for that piece of information. I'm going to circle back to that. Go ahead.
Sorry. Vivitrol, which is naltrexone, is, has no, does not light up that part of their brain that makes them high. It's an opioid blocker. So if they use opioids, and it also works on alcoholics, it blocks that sensation that they get, that gives them that euphoric feeling. However, you cannot start somebody on naltrexone or vivitrol until they have not taken opioids for a duration of time, it's like 14 days, because it can cause them to go into rapid withdrawals. So that's why we're going to be using a combination of medication, because we have people coming off the street who'll have opioids in their system, so we can't give them naltrexone or vivitrol. But we have people who have been in our jail who have not taken any opioids, so we want to start them on that so that way when they get out, they don't have that craving and they don't go out and use.
Okay.
Did that answer all the-
Well, I know, in a past presentation, which may be, I'm not, I'm overlapping here, so forgive me. The suboxone, is that, how do you pronounce that?
Suboxone is buprenorphine.
It's what?
It's buprenorphine.
Okay, so that's what that is? That's a generic word for it? But that's not an opioid. It's not a synthetic opioid?
It's, it's called an opioid agonist, so it's, I mean, it's labeled a controlled substance because there is, you know, a potential for them to abuse it, but it's not like they're going to overdose on it. It doesn't give them that same euphoric high feeling like they can get from heroin, or fentanyl, or oxycodone, or even methadone.
Methadone, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. It was very informative. So that answers some of my questions. So where I was going is, looking at that, you know, I'm conflicted of, you know, do we use a more, a different therapy approach, which, I mean, is, I'm out of my lane, so I'm just trying to understand this. You know, that was more, I guess, traditional, where, you know, abstinence is kind of a point? Or, you know, so she talked about methadone, and the reason they don't use it, well, we've got one person that's applying that uses that in their program. It's on the application. So it seems to me, you know, just from a redneck guy from Chatham County, we're just replacing a drug with another drug, and you're still addicted to the drug when you come out, and, you know, it just seems like perpetuating the problem.
It's, that's a-
I don't know how comfortable I am with a program that, you know, still use a methadone.
It's a common misunderstanding of the use of those medications. It is, individuals who engage in abstinence-only programs have a much higher risk of dying from a fatal overdose. And a lot of that comes back to what Michelle was saying, was those medications are intended to reduce the severe withdrawal symptoms that come from individuals as they are coming off of substance use. For some providers, they will, some providers will incorporate the therapy in tandem with the medication, which is really, really critical because they're addressing those behavioral issues, sir, that you've already mentioned. But also the medications allow that person to maintain a clear mind and focus, so they can engage in their families again. They can go to work. They can become, if they're not already, because a lot of people who are actively using substances do go to work. I just want to point that out. Not everybody is without a job. But they can continue to do those things and be actively engaged in their communities. Those medications are really, really, really critical for a lot of individuals to sustain recovery long term. Depending on, now, I am not a behavioral health provider at all, so I'm not even going to get outside my lane, but depending on the provider's assessment of that individual, they may only use medications for a very short time. It depends on what the assessment is and what their dual, they may have a dual diagnosis of where they have other complicating behavioral health needs that include trauma as well as other complex mental health diagnoses. So they may need those medications for a longer period of time. I would, I would not do well if I tried to explain it any further than that. That's, that's the extent of my understanding.
I could, I would just say that I went to a session in Colorado with the NACO Conference, and they had a panel discussion there, and one of the people that, that spoke was from North Carolina, and he had brought with him a young woman that worked with him, and she had used medication. She, she wasn't, you know, she was an opioid addict, and she had lost everything. And she, they, she was able to use MAT, you know, Medication-Assisted Therapy. And because of that, then she was able to, you know, to get clean, to stay clean. She was able to get a job, and, and so the work that she did was with, was with addicts. And so she was able to help some people do meaningful work and help some people to turn their lives around. So I know that it's, there are people who debate it. I know that there are people who don't understand all of it. But from my place of faith, if it will help someone, if it's been shown to, you know, to be effective and to help, I think, you know, I hear those people say, they made a choice, let them go. We're wasting a lot of money. But I have to think, what if it were my child? What if it were your child? And I can't say that. I just, I can't be the person who says that. And with the homeless population, we have some veterans in that homeless population that suffer from PTSD, and that's why they use drugs. Do we just throw them aside after they've served our country and say, you, you don't get to live here because we don't like it? I don't know, but I think if we use this wisely, maybe it can be impactful in those lives. And this might be a way to change some of those lives. And I have to say, it's interesting to me, for two days now, I have thought about a passage that I read in the Book of Luke, and the comment there was that sometimes that we're so out of touch with His heart that we seek to destroy the very people that He wants to save. So, so I, I may, I, I mean, that's just me and my place of faith. Everybody doesn't come from a place of faith, but that's what mine tells me. And so I, I have to, I am compelled to, if I feel like the work has been put in and that the money is going to be used carefully, what is the money for? You know, the money is supposed to be used to somehow, some way, maybe undo the damage or, you know, help alleviate the damage caused by these greedy drug companies and distributors. And if we can get this right, it can have an impact, and it might can get some of those homeless people off the street. I mean, I had a meeting with somebody from Lydia's place the other day and asked how, what are you seeing? And she talked about a couple of women and a family that they had connected to housing. So they're out of Lydia's place and in housing, which is the goal. That's the goal. If it's done right, that's the goal right there. So I don't know if we can get this right or not. But I was on a Zoom today, listening to all these different people from across the state, people in, you know, health departments, people, county commissioners, and they, they have no clue. We are a heck of a lot farther along than they are. They have no idea what, really, what direction to, to go. So I, I think we're a heck of a lot farther along than that.
Yeah, and as Mr. Johnson pointed out, we're really building on a strong foundation here in Randolph County. Leah and I were talking about this last week, the model that we're building, which is setting the standard for the state of North Carolina, a county that, a county or a community that doesn't have anything in place, this is not the model for them because they don't have the structure that we already have here. We had a collaborative that was already strong, active, and engaged with one another. We had some of these programs were already active and successfully running. They're looking for opportunities to build and expand what they're doing, and so that has, that has been the, the core to the success of our, of our process so far.
Just so, the group of students, Park Scholars from NC State that came here Saturday morning, and we met right in here, and I went to Chief Deputy Andre Azleton for some stats. She sent me several things, but in January of '23, that's just two months ago, 263 males and 128 females, upon admission to the jail, required detox monitoring. That's 391 in a 400-bed jail. Probably some of those were repeats.
Potentially, yes, sir.
That's what we lived, and I, I've spent 30, almost 35 years in a hosiery mill. My brother-in-law, when he was about four years old at his grandmother's house, he found a book of matches and decided to go out in the back of the woods and start a fire. And he caught himself on fire and was burned severely to his waist. And he spent nine months in a hospital at Duke with multiple- And he spent nine months in a hospital at Duke with multiple skin grafts. And he got addicted as a five-year-old kid that followed him the rest of his life, pretty much. We worked with him. He had a home. He lived with his mother and his sister. And we suspicioned that he was keeping some unsavory friends again. So my wife, he had a job at the mill, uh, she would keep his paycheck. And he got paid every two weeks and I would go down and cash the check. I went to the sheet service station and filled his car up with gas and gave him, I think, $50 or something of some spending money. And his wife, we made his car payment with the rest of his money and she kept the rest. I got a call from his sister one morning and said that he was laying in the floor. I went, I'd met him that very morning, it was payday, filled his car up and he, he'd worked second shift. She called me about two hours later that morning, said he's laying in the floor. So I go down to the house and he was laying in the, he'd sat down on the commode lid, stuck a needle in his arm and fell over in the floor dead before he could stand up. I went to move his car and I noticed the gas tank was empty. So soon as I left him, he went and siphoned all the gas out of his car and used that to buy drugs and it killed him. I had a grandson that decided to jump off of the 311 Bridge in Archdale at 17 years old and kill himself. So I've lived with that. I understand the, the issues and, and what it does to a family. Still living with, will, will live till we die.
Yes, sir.
So, um, I, I want something done. I want it stopped. I want that mess over there stopped. So how do we go about it? How do we best use these dollars to stop it? Not to prolong it, sustain it, but to stop it. That's what we want.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've been sitting here hearing all of these things and I'm looking at the recommendations page and, uh, and I thank you for that and the, the effort you've put into that. From my standpoint, I'm looking at what does action planning and timeline mean? What does evaluation plan mean? You know, what does data collection mean?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I know, uh, I'm not saying this is right or wrong. It's just, I don't know, when I look at, and it's, it's a known thing, uh, I'm on the Keaton's Place board. And I can't possibly vote for this or vote for it or against it. But it says Keaton's Place is an evaluation plan. Well, I know what a Keaton's Place does, but the only thing it does is evaluation plan and, and I know it does other things than evaluation. So, you know, then I look at DSS, I'm on that board. I hear every, well, not every month, but I hear a lot of things that go on. And, uh, it just breaks my heart to hear all the things that go on and a lot of it's drug-backed mess.
Yes.
But it says recovery support services, connection to care. Okay. Well, DSS is looking for $150,000 and it has all these technical services and I'm sure it does because it does a lot of, of areas. So my, my question is, what's this $150,000 for? What, what does it mean? That's what I'm asking.
So I just want to point out, the, uh, the X's that you see in that, in that table, do not rec, do not identify that they are doing those things. It's identifying they need to do those things.
They need to do these.
Yes, prior to project implementation. So I'll explain, if you'd like, I'll explain these one by one because they're four critical puzzle pieces. These are those critical weaknesses that if we don't address those, we cannot say that for certain we'll have successful project implementation. And I'm glad that you point that out because these are very public health terms that we say all the time, but to the average citizens may not make a whole lot of sense. So if I say something that doesn't make sense, please ask me. I appreciate that. So the action plan puzzle piece, it says, I call it the roadmap. A lot of, if you read some of your narratives, you may have seen some of those had their action plans in table format. That's what we're looking for. It has the goals and then the objectives. And the way we explain the objectives is that's your action steps to achieve that goal. What, it's kind of like when you're telling your kids, you gotta do this before you go to school, you gotta do this before you, so until our, our goal is to get ready for school. We gotta do all these things until we're ready for school. It's the same thing. We gotta take all these action steps to achieve that particular goal. We want them to pair that with a timeline so that one, we can follow along with the progress they're making over the next three years. It also helps them communicate to their staff and their board, their donors, that this is our plan for the next few years and we want you to be able to follow along with us. Sometimes those action plans have to be modified as you go along because sometimes you, you have hiccups along the way. You couldn't recruit the person you needed or, you know, oh, legislation inserted itself and we'd had no control and so it's delaying this piece of the project. And so you modify your action plan. The evaluation plan, really fancy word for performance measures. And performance measures meaning that you're measuring the success of your program, but in addition to that, it's also surveying the people receiving the services. You know, how do you feel about the services you receive? Can we do something better for you? In addition, I like to include surveying those community partners. Are we a good partner to you? Is there something we could be doing better or collaborate better so we're working together? That's a really good piece of evaluation. So evaluation is half performance measures, half feedback from the people receiving the services that you provide. Data collection is simply how are you tracking those performance measures in that evaluation plan? You know, do you have a schedule? Do you have tools? Do you have an Excel spreadsheet? Do you do a tally mark on the wall? You know, how are you tracking those things? You want to have good, solid processes so we can trust the data you're giving us and also so you feel good about it when you look at it. And then the operations gaps and connect to care, as I mentioned earlier, it's really common for human service organizations to say, we're going to connect you to all these services, but we never clearly articulate how we do that. And as you all have already said, it's easy for these individuals to fall in a gap. And if they fall in the gap, we may lose them and then we may not see them again for a few months. And so having that really close relationship with the community partners with each other and saying, hey, Commissioner McDowell, I'm picking up so-and-so from the detention center. They've already started on their medication. I'm going to make sure that I get them to that first assessment, that first meeting with their provider, you know, after they leave the detention center and you're certain your program is going to help them with transportation for the next few weeks, correct? You know, and so it's that beautiful, as the word that Mr. Johnson used, I loved it, synergy, because you're using that synergy to build the recovery ecosystem. When we start doing that and it doesn't take, and I, as you pointed out, Mr. Commissioner Kidd, those results, unfortunately, you don't, you don't see them really quickly, right? We look at the population measures, which are, again, a big fancy word for, for measures that are impacted by a lot of different programs. We don't see those really start to change for anywhere from three to 10 years. It depends on how much of an impact they have. But when you have all of these things together, you start to see the ship turn over the next three to five years, which is really, really exciting opportunity.
So to take Commissioner McDowell's question, like for Keaton's Place and the only X is under evaluation plan.
Yes.
So that's to better evaluate their clientele.
And to evaluate their program. Yes, yes. And, um, and I will say, when we worked with Keaton's Place, when they were building their application, they had, they were very nervous and they're here, right?
Yep.
Yes.
They were really nervous and so we talked through that process. You know, what does that application look like? If you've never done it before, it's scary. It's like, I don't know what these words mean. What are you asking me to do? And so we walked them through that process. And Susan asked us at the collaborative, she goes, I hope you're really impressed and they did what we asked, they did a really good job. They provided a lot of their data in table format. They used some charts. They built their action plan, um, as we had recommended. But the evaluation plan, again, is a piece of the puzzle that for a lot of people is new and they've never done it before. And so that's why we're providing that technical assistance here at the beginning. But that evaluation is what we will be able to use to communicate to the elected officials and the community. This is the results of our investment. This is the change we are witnessing in our community. And the nice thing is, is that part of that evaluation plan that's required by the MOA is, are the success stories. You know, we've all, we all can think of people who had, um, terrible circumstances, but sometimes it's really nice to be reminded of the amazing success stories that people like Keaton's Place have the opportunity to witness. The detention center, they're really excited to be able to share those success stories as they implement their program. So that will really make us feel really good. We'll have not only qual- quantitative data, so the numbers, but the stories that will tell us that we're having success.
I also want to point out that, um, everywhere we go, we hear workforce development. Well, those people leaving the detention center that, you know, have been, you know, using MAT and you get them set up when they leave, then they may make excellent employees. I know a small company, the man who owns it will not hire anybody that has not been in prison or in the detention center. And he has had employees, because I've had conversation with him, that are on the medication, medicated assisted therapy. Did I get that right? Medicated assist, yeah. And, um, they work for him. He said they make excellent employees because they are, they, they treasure that opportunity to have that second chance and that they make really good employees.
Yes, and, and I will say, one of the strategies that our collaborative has elected to implement the next few years is, uh, recovery-friendly workplace policies. So working with employers, just like you stated, Hope, to, to build those policies, not as a punitive response to identifying issues, but as a support system.
And if we put them to work, then, you know, to their, to their points, I mean, then, you know, then, you know, we get them, we get them homes, you know, they get off the streets, they're productively involved and, you know, and their lives are changed.
All right. Good discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And all of you, I know you're part of the, part of the request, I see, I know most of you, for all of you, and, uh, we will move along with this process. So Will, do you want to, um, talk about our next?
Mr. Chairman, I do have, I have one question. We're, we're talking about doing this, uh, question in May, I guess. Does that give you enough? And I hate, you've been up here for an hour and a half. I hate, where, yeah. Does that give you enough time to implement these programs from May to July 1st?
To get the technical assistance pieces done?
Yeah.
Leah and I, it would be, um, we'd move quickly, but we would schedule one-on-ones with each of these organizations, which there's only eight, I mean, excuse me, six organizations, so it wouldn't be terribly difficult. Some of them already have some action plans, we've already started working on them with. And so we're already addressing that, those concerns.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as long as we, you know, I just didn't want to get you in the bind as far as.
We, we understood it may was okay. So I mean, we talked about next Monday, but that's kind of a short time, but we, we understood May was okay.
Yes, we can work that down, I guess.
Okay. All right, Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've talked about how to use the first wave of opioid settlement funds. Uh, there's another wave coming. The first wave, as you recall, was for the distributors and, uh, the national settlement is finished working with the, some of the pharmacy companies. So you have another wave, is what they're calling it, of $7.8 million to go with the 9.8 that we got with the first wave, or we plan to get over the first wave. Uh, there's some things that need to happen if the board, county commissioners are interested in participating in this second wave of settlements. There's a resolution to authorize the county manager to sign all the settlements when they're available. And, uh, there's a supplemental agreement to the MOA that's required as well, too. And that is, for the most part, just saying that, um, we will use the funds in the same manner that the wave one, um, was restricted, so. And then there's a budget amendment to recognize the 7.8 in the capital or the special revenue fund. This will be a different timeframe. The original wave was over 18 years. The pharmacy companies are paying pretty much as they want to, but it's a different timeframes. But I think Walmart for one, wanted to pay it upfront, so we'll get all their money pretty soon after the settlement. So, uh, the, the funding cycle, the cash flow is different, but it's for the same purpose.
But the, some of the details is the same as, as the first, for the MOA and those things.
Yeah, the supplemental agreement is to say that, uh, we will use the funds for the same purposes that the original was used for.
That's under, uh, Tab B, if you, uh, and there is a motion here, if you, it's, it's, people literally given their life in order for this to happen, so, um, unless you want to bring it back next week, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the resolution authorizing the, uh, five wave two settlements and agreements for the next batch of money.
I don't know why we can't go ahead and handle that tonight.
I'm saying, if you want to, I'm asking if you want to make a motion.
Okay, sure, I'll make a motion.
We'll do it right now.
No, I'll make a motion that we adopt that resolution. Would you like for me to read it?
I want you to read it.
Sure. Okay. Resolution by the County of Randolph, authorizing execution of opioid settlements and approving the supplemental agreement. Is that the right one? Oh, oh, okay. I thought you wanted me to read the resolution. I'm sorry.
Just make the motion.
Okay. All right. Then I make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to sign the five wave two settlements and the supplemental agreement for additional settlements of opioid litigation and approve the associated budget amendment to the grant project ordinance.
Further discussion, questions? Any questions? Those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And it is approved. So we'll have another batch come. So again, any other business come before this board tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank all of you again for your participation tonight. Very much.